It's Bill McLaughlin here. Our theme.
Okay, I'd like to call the June 28th meeting of the Moscow Planning and Zoning Commission to order and begin with a review of the minutes. Are there any additions, corrections, additions?
They looked informative.
Yep. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion when you approve.
Second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Moving on to correspondence. Mike, have you received any correspondence? Okay.
No.
So, we move on to the Transportation Commission meeting report. Joel, can you give us an update?
That's easy because I was back in Wisconsin, missed the last meeting, which caused them to declare they didn't have a quorum.
Oh, okay.
So, there was no meeting. And the next meeting will be on the second Thursday, which is 12, something like that, in this room at four o'clock, and I haven't seen a posted agenda yet.
Okay. Well, tangential to that evening, Les McDonald is going to come and give a presentation on designation of the Collector Streets, correct? I mean, I'm sorry, not the Collector Streets, for D, Sixth and Third Street. So, might be an opportunity for members of the Transportation Commission who are interested to...
When is that?
That's at our next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, our July 12th meeting. So...
Will we miss him? Then, we're passing out a meeting? What am I...
No, our next meeting, this is the end of June, and our next meeting is July 12th. Right? Go ahead, wrong date.
Should be.
Must be.
Yep. So, what we don't have, I think, Mike is going to not be here for the second meeting in July, so we've decided not to have that meeting. And then, I won't be here for the first of August, but Rob agreed to lead the meeting if we have one, so... Okay. So, anyway, it's an opportunity for them to participate or ask questions if they would like. Okay, we've reached the point in the agenda for an opportunity for public comment, and I don't know... Victoria, would you like to make some comments? Okay. And I just want to announce that this is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to the commission about items that are not on the agenda or currently pending before us. It's a 15-minute set aside, and we have Victoria here to speak with us tonight.
I don't know if that microphone's on, Victoria.
Do I need it?
You can sit at the table if you want.
But you still need to state your name and address, et cetera, all that.
Okay. Victoria Seaver, 121 North Lilly, Moscow. And I checked, and I'm legal to speak tonight. So, I have read the Comprehensive Plan a couple of times. Last time in its entirety was last fall, and you're working on it, and so I'm getting refreshed, but I'd like to go back to Chapter One, and I have a paragraph that I would like to see added. And, oh, and Mills is here to talk about tonight, too. Anyway, because global climate changes are increasingly of concern and being addressed in many planning documents, not the least of which is the Paris Climate Agreement and by cities across the nation, and because Moscow does plan for sustainable growth, smart development, environmental integrity, and community values, I'd like to see statements added or strengthened which could highlight areas where at the local level, where we are at the local level, are aware and responsive to overarching changes that both impact this region and where we may do our bit to act constructively. That said, so, right up front in center in the plan, I would make the following additional paragraph. To frame it, the Chapter One is a vision for Moscow, and there's these sections that are... And Section 1.1.1 is community values, which frames community character, sustainability management, and predictability. And the bold titles under that, which I'm rephrasing, are Sense of Place, Resource and Growth Sustainability, Proactive Land Use and Growth Policies, Access to Services for All... And then, I have this new paragraph I would like to see. So, what I came up with this morning was, the bold subtitle, Local Response to Changing Global Climate Conditions. And the paragraph is, which you can tweak. Particular attention should be considered and incorporated where feasible on elements that could mitigate potential impacts from global warming. These might include but are not limited to areas such as: population growth resulting from climate migration, environmental stress from weather impacts like drought, flooding from early snowmelt, and extensive hard winters, and their effects on infrastructure maintenance, land use expansion and densification, and adaptive local economies. It's a mouthful. Mike has it in writing. But I think it fits in. I think it's time we take that little bigger picture and make mention of it, you know, and keep it in mind, keep that awareness there. So, and then whoever does the wordsmithing, because it's a wonderful document and it's beautifully written, but whoever does all that wordsmithing, there's probably places in the plan where a word or a phrase or a sentence could come in to help support that. But I think we need to address in a general way the changing global climate conditions.
Thank you for that input. Mike, what is the process for, as we go through the plan, will we be going back to look at Chapter One, or how would this... What would be our process for taking this into consideration?
Yeah, we'll go back. Sure. Yeah, we're on Chapter Five right now. We have two more chapters after that. The last chapter is more of just an implementation chapter that discusses all of the chapters and the implementation actions. And so, yeah, once we get to that point, then we'll go back from the beginning, and then we'll start to look at the document as a whole and revisit those chapters, probably one, two, three at a time, and look at the changes, and then, you know, we can certainly take a look at it at that point.
Is that the appropriate time, do you think?
Yeah, I think we'll get through, and then we can go back through, and after we've had it, it's time to look at the changes and think about, you know, the broader picture of the comp plan a little bit more. We could certainly take a look at that at that time.
So, are you going to leave copies of this material?
He has it. Mike has it.
Okay.
Mike has it.
So, Mike, is there anything else that we need to do to make sure that this is scheduled for the appropriate time? So that...
I'll just, yeah, I'll just put a reminder, and I'm sure Victoria would...
She'll stay on top of it, right? The one thing I would add, just listening to it, is fire. I mean, fire in this region, I mean, we've seen it in the cops.
That's part of the drought thing.
Right. Right, exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mills, did... Were you planning to come up and speak about anything, or no?
I thought you were doing a review of the reasons statement.
Oh, we'll get there. Yeah. Right now, we're just public comment.
Thank you.
Okay, so... All right. In fact, our next item on the agenda is approval of relevant criteria and standards, beginning with a proposal for a preliminary subdivision plot for the property generally located directly north of the current undeveloped portion of Sunnyside Avenue, Blue's Prairie Edition. So, Mike, do you have any comments on that?
I don't. This is just the relevant criteria and standards document for Blue's Prairie Edition, and just based upon the commission's decision, recommendation last time, I just drafted it for your view, and it's attached.
Yep. Does anybody have any comments on it?
Lovely, as always.
Yep, looked good to me. I did, oh, I did have one question. It's a little minor thing. It was Item 14. Maybe I just kept reading it, and something didn't seem right. Second sentence, twin home dwellings are required to be at least 25 feet, and townhouse dwellings are required to be at least 18 feet in width. I think what you meant is lots for twin home dwellings and, right? Not the structure itself.
Yeah, it's meant to be lots.
Yeah. So, that would be the only thing I really picked up was... Okay. Anybody else? Can I hear a motion to accept that?
Move to accept.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Going to abstain, given that I was absent. However, I would have supported the application.
Okay. So, our second set of reason statement of relevant criteria and standards pertains to the proposed rezon of an approximately 8.4 acre lot located at 2375 North, North Highway 95, within the area that city impact from the Ag Forest Zone to the suburban residential zone. Does anybody have any comments on that? Reason statement of criteria and standards? It also looked good to me, but I don't know if anybody picked anything up.
No, it looked fine. I mean, I didn't catch your last one, so I skimmed through them, but I never see anything.
Well, I read that one, and I thought, really? The buildings are really... You know, so then I, yeah, I just noticed it because I'm an architect.
There you go. I did have one question about the proposal, and what is the total acreage of SR with the adjacent property not included in the... 8.4 acres was what I was under consideration, and my understanding was that there was additional acreage across the road?
Yeah, that was, I believe, 18 acres across the road.
So, there's a total of some 25 acres, which is well in excess of the suggested 10 acre minimum.
Correct.
Okay.
I move to approve the relevant criteria and standards.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
I'm going to abstain, also.
Okay. And I realized I probably should have given Mills a chance to speak, but I didn't, and we already approved it, so I don't... Mills? Well, anyway. Okay, so that, we move on to Item Six, the 2017 Commission Survey. And in this case, Mike gave us a list of suggestions, I mean, of former questions over, I guess, the last 12 or more years, almost, or 11 years, anyway. And I'm just wondering if anybody has any ideas for what we might focus on this year, and so, maybe you can explain it more. So, probably you should.
Well, I just put together kind of a brief presentation to...
Oh, okay.
Give you a little bit of background as to when we started this. It was back in 2002, just used as more of a benchmark for community perceptions and just to evaluate how we're doing as a city. We usually random sample about 1,200 residential addresses, and that is statistically valid based upon our population size. Commission questions started with four, now it's restricted to two questions. And then, last year, it was restructured a little bit to include an annual survey. So, instead of every two years, now it'll be shifted towards every even year, you have a city questions included in the survey, and then every odd year, the commission questions. So, the commissions have all, questions have all been consolidated into one survey. It's my understanding that it still includes some of the demographic information. You know, I think that with ADU questions that we had, I think, maybe two citizen surveys ago, we really used that to break down kind of the demographics of where, you know, the responses, and I, we thought it was pretty valuable to have that information. So, I know that I've been asking them to include that as well, and I think it's their goal to include the demographic information. So, I've just kind of gone through, the administration gave us a good baseline of the questions that were asked over the years. I kind of just wanted to go through and just revisit what the responses were, so a little bit more detail. We, in 2004, it was more of mixed use question, just, you know, how would you perceive, or would you allow some mixed commercial uses within your neighborhood? How would you feel about that? Really, a mix, you know, it's kind of 50/50. You had about half that agreed with that, half that disagreed with that, then you had some neutral responses. And then, looking at the importance of neighborhood characteristics, and then just, we can just go through, you know, the list. Obviously, proximity to schools are fairly important. Single-family housing neighborhood is pretty important to some people as well. And then, you had a kind of a mixed bag. You had some mixed uses with duplex or apartment neighborhoods. Those are a little bit less favorable, not as important as single-family for the respondents.
It's interesting that one of the highest ones is the proximity to public walking back, bike and path, I think.
Yeah.
I mean, besides single family.
Which seems to be fairly important. We asked a question, it may have been the last citizen survey about different neighborhood types, and, you know, it was similar responses, so it was split.
When was the last time we did it, this type of question?
It was, we asked a question in 2014, I believe, that asked, kind of compared the different neighborhood types, whether or not you, you know, prefer to live in detached single-family housing as opposed to maybe attached townhouse, single-family housing. So, compared those things, and I think the last question, we'll get to it, was, you know, whether or not you want to live in a neighborhood that has bike paths and walking, you know, sidewalks incorporated, and it was, you know, overwhelming, like, yeah, of course, we want those amenities in our neighborhood. So, yeah, it's, you expect to see that answer. 2006, I don't think the commission asked a question this year, but this Transportation Commission question really pertained to, you know, some off-street, some things that we do. So, off-street parking was concerning regulations that require any new buildings constructed downtown to provide off-street parking, and then you had quite a few, 63% of respondents either strongly support or support that, 13% oppose that or strongly oppose that. So, that's interesting. 2008, asked a question regarding requiring water conservation requirements for new developments. You had quite a bit of support, 68% strongly agree or agree, and then asking if they support allowing gated communities. You had quite a few that disagreed with the support of gated communities. And then, we asked a kind of a follow-up question as far as the mixed uses in the neighborhood, mixture of residential. And then, so the presence of a mixture of residential uses within a single neighborhood make the neighborhood less desirable to 55% of respondents and more desirable to 25% of respondents. So, you know, that kind of dictates that single-family residents prefer just to live in single-family neighborhoods and not have access to more mixed-use services. And then, of limited commercial use suggested for mixed use, new residential element, grocery and eating, drinking establishments scored the highest. So, if you're going to have some mixed use in your neighborhood, then, you know, prefer to have some type of grocery and eating and drinking establishments. Daycare facilities, medical offices came in just below that, and then some personal services, professional services, and convenience stores rated below that. 2010, so we asked just the interest in high-quality, high-density residential living, so apartment loft condominium near downtown near CIO campus. Kind of a mixed bag here. It was, you know, a little bit less on the disagree than the agree on that question. And then, the presence of mixture of residential uses within a single neighborhood. It includes common open spaces that buffers to provide separation between those uses and make a neighborhood more desirable. Quite a bit of support for that, so as long as there's some type of buffering between the uses, then that's viewed as more desirable than just uses that are just a mixture in the neighborhood. And then, three most important planning items below you feel should be addressed in planning for future growth of the community. Scored highest was economic development, traffic management and congestion, and water resource planning were the top three. And then, City Moscow considering greater allowance of limited commercial uses, so we're, you know, kind of asked that mixed-use question a few years in a row, and, you know, similarly, came out with some similar examples. So, eating and drinking establishments were the top. You had groceries, some daycare, and it was pretty much the, kind of had the same hierarchy as what we had seen before with, when we asked the question in previous years, so... And 2012, this is all pertaining to accessory land use. So, these, you know, when we were thinking about mending the code to allow ADUs, we were asking these preliminary questions just to gather some data, whether or not they would be viewed favorably. You know, the outcome was that everybody thinks they should be allowed within their neighborhood, but there's not a whole lot of interest in adding those to the property. So, I think we've seen that, you know. There hasn't been a whole lot that have been permitted, probably about a half dozen since we passed it about a couple of years ago, but nobody seemed to have an issue with them. So, that kind of came out with the survey here. 2014, we asked the question of climate change as Moscow plans for the future, and we had quite a bit of support. We had some neutral, but we had, you know, a little over, actually, a little under 50% either strongly or agreed. And then, we asked these neighborhood characteristics, mixture of housing type stores, businesses, or primarily single-family. So, there's a lot of people out there that still like their single-family neighborhoods without mixture of uses, but then there's, you know, the other half that do like the, you know, I think it's an example of the current breakdown of Moscow. You have probably half of the people that live in some mixed-use neighborhoods in the core, and then you have, you know, the other half that live in the, you know, early, the newer subdivisions that may not include as much mixture of uses, so... Let me kind of go through the, just the examples. They're all pretty even. Get down here to the end. Would you rather own or rent an attached single-family home? So, this is the townhouse style, where it's easy to walk to shops, restaurants, and have a further commute to work. Scored a little bit less than own or rent a detached, single-family house and have to drive to shops and restaurants and have a longer commute. And then, this was the question about, you know, neighborhood with well-connected sidewalks and bicycle facilities, or neighborhood without well-connected sidewalks and bicycle facilities. So, we can't agree on what type of, you know, dwelling we would like to live in, but we can agree that we'd like to see the, you know, well-connected and with sidewalks and bicycle facilities, which is, I think it's great that we can all agree on that.
And so much of the other depends on the point in life that people are looking for housing. I mean, you know...
It does.
What's a portion of their lifestyle, depending on where they are on age spectrum, so...
It's all perspective. I mean, the, you live in a single-family neighborhood, and you need to drive, and it's, for Moscow, it's what, five minutes anywhere to any of those amenities? So, I, you know, you may get a little bit different responses if it was, you know, 15, 20-minute drive to get to something that you need to go to as opposed to, you know, walking, so...
Do you have any idea? I wonder if we've ever tried to count up what percentage of our housing stock has no sidewalks at all? The every, I mean, I don't think it's a large number, but as you go beyond Blaine toward Mountain View, we forgot about sidewalks for quite a number of years there, the 60s and 70s. So, there are, there's a substantial number of homes that have no sidewalk at all. It's just interesting that well-connected sidewalks gets a big number.
Yeah.
And one would like to think that living in one of those neighborhoods without sidewalks would have caught their attention.
Yeah.
The city does have an inventory of sidewalks.
I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure engineering has that inventory. I mean, I know they have the inventory of how many miles of sidewalks they do have, and I'm sure they have the inventory of sidewalks that we don't have, so... Yeah, I could, just to entertain everybody.
Yeah, there was an era where we built neighborhoods without sidewalks, for sure, and...
There was that short, there was that, it was like 20, maybe 25 years when we seemed to think, duh, we've got cars, we don't have to walk. Yeah. I didn't know if that figure, I never asked that question before, whether that's... And it seems to be just in the area, really, and we got back to one sidewalk at least on one side of the street.
Yeah, the whole Anderson Frontier neighborhood was platted, I think, with a sidewalk on just one side of the street in that area. But, you know, I think everywhere, I don't know, that there's, there's very few streets that don't have a sidewalk, at least on one side, you know, even on Harrison and those streets that aren't paved. They usually tend to have a sidewalk at least on one side.
Yeah, North Pope.
But even there, they're filling in the, filling them in pretty good rate.
Yeah. So, just thinking about, you know, future questions, all of this stuff is directed towards a project that we're working on. You know, I think maybe in the past, we've, you know, we're going to start the subdivision code here within the next year, so if there's things that pertain to maybe a subdivision rewrite of that ordinance, I know that, you know, in our office, we've gotten a lot of concern over the years over multifamily infill development, going in and having, you know, a lot of times when you have an apartment go into maybe an R4 area that has older homes in it, all the lots are, tend to be not very wide, or at least the lots are not very wide, but they're deep. So, you end up having to reorient maybe an apartment building where you have no walls, or you have no windows on the face of the street. So, you know, those are a lot of complaints that we've gotten over the years, is, you know, they're allowed to build an apartment complex, but it's in an older area town, and then you end up, just because of that configuration, don't end up having, you know, you just have a kind of a vinyl-sided wall that's not really oriented towards the street, and, you know, we've gotten some complaints over that. And so, I think we've, you know, possibly tossed around, looking at maybe some design guidelines for those multifamily projects that are infill development in older neighborhoods. So, you know, it's just kind of throwing out ideas, but...
How long will it take to get it back, do you think? About when will we get it back?
They usually tally them. They send them out, I believe, in September, so we have, you know, a meeting or two to formulate them. I think they should target getting them out in September, and then we usually get them back and tally them by early next year, so we should have some results by then.
Mike, who is conducting the survey? How is it administered?
Administration conducts the survey, and so they buy a random address sample, and then we geocode it within our office to all the address points, and it's divided into sectors. So, there's about five, four or five different quadrants of the city, and then all those addresses, you know, end up with dots on our GIS map, and so we can track where all the surveys are going and the, you know, all the quadrants. And then, you know, when they go out, there's a code that has, you know, all the information on it that nobody knows what it means except us when we get them returned, so we can figure out what quadrant they were received from. But, yeah, the city mails those out, and typically what happens is they'll send a postcard out first saying, you're going to get a survey. You get the survey, and then you may have a postcard afterwards reminding you to send it back.
So, I think if that, only Moscow residents are being surveyed?
Yeah.
So, there are no campus addresses for students? So there are no campus addresses for students that are included in the survey?
There are.
There are?
Yep.
Do, do we have those type of numbers in the survey? Is there any demographic options where people put, my age is so-and-so, like Anne brought up a great point, it'd be really nice to know which age groups are leaning towards certain ideas and others.
Yeah.
So is that included also?
Yeah, it's all demographic information, so, you know, usually it asks the typical census data, like how many people live in your household, you know, your median income, household income, age, race, sex.
Yeah, they're good, they're good surveys, there's a whole lot of information.
Awesome. They were very helpful for planning purposes that we've targeted our questions in historic preservation, on the Historic Preservation Commission to really inform our path forward, and I think we can do the same here in terms of what are our most recurring issues or, you know, eminent issues. And I was, when I saw this, I was trying to think of some of them, and we should really start tossing those around, because we don't have that many, much time to formulate the questions by the time we get through multiple meetings. But it seems like parking is an issue, parking downtown, maybe?
Yep, I was going to say parking downtown is the issue du jour here.
Yeah, it seems like that's a big one, and the other one is, to me, another one is multimodal and the character and quality of streets in terms of integrating multimodal and making them walkable and accessible to different, since it seems like a priority that people want to be able to access different parts of the community. Can they do that without a car? Or can they do that with a car and have everything coexist somewhat peacefully? And, you know, how we handle growth, to me, one of the big ones is how do we handle growth on the eastern section of town when everybody wants to go west? So I don't know what the questions are, but I think those are some of the issues that, you know, if people work at WSU, or at Schweitzer, at U of I, or they shop at the mall, and they live that way. So how do you get people there that?
Yes, public transportation is a good one to put up there as well.
Right.
Do we have that on the weekend, public transportation? Do you know?
I don't know if we do or not. I think they, they may have a Saturday fixed route that goes to the market and ends early, but I, I don't know the answer to that question.
Somebody told me we didn't, and I just found that hard to believe.
Oh, the transit doesn't go on the, on the weekend, I don't think.
No, I find it hard to believe there is no bus between WSU and U of I. Well, that too.
Well, it used to be.
Do you know if the transit runs on, do you know if the transit runs on the weekend? I don't think it does, does it?
To my knowledge, it does not run on Saturday. It did several years ago, one summer during Farmer's Market.
Oh, okay.
But has not since. That was six, seven years ago.
It appears to me somewhere how we got to get better at that, but it seems like our neighbors over there are just, the men over there, straight up the hill, wherever you go over there, but it seems like their more, their transit's really working better than ours, for some reason.
Starts, starts with M and ends with Y and has a 1 in the middle.
Yeah, maybe.
I mean, I, it'd be interesting to see, get another climate change and planning question just to compare with how, which direction opinion is moving, but I don't know if it's worth burning, if we only get two questions. I think we want four questions.
I think that they said to try to keep it to two, but I think we could go into three, just now that we're splitting them up between city questions and commission questions. I think that was what was happening, was they were worried about response rates because it was getting so large, because commissions were trying to extend their questions out, like, you know, question 24 there with just, you know, multiple tiers to the question.
So does the, I realize the council sees the whole thing, but do they have the large body of questions? How's that broken, how does that break out?
Each city commission gets two to three questions, so it's, it's.
And how many questions are there? Remind me.
How many commissions are there?
How many questions on the, on the exam?
Well, it's going to be new this year, because we just have commission questions and demographic questions, so I don't know.
Well, I see, okay.
Yeah.
So what would be helpful, helpful for some of these questions is if we knew what the Transportation Commission was going to ask, because then we could ask different things, potentially, or reinforce by asking a different way the same question and see if you get the same, I mean, there's ways to look at that differently. Yes, Walter?
I can report back after our next meeting.
Okay, that'd be great. Walter?
Joel, I don't know who asked the smart transit questions, so you may want to be the one to find out from Jen, who normally does, if anybody, and whether or not it's P&amp;Z or Transportation.
Okay.
Because I don't remember. But it seems like something that should be included in the survey.
Right.
The third route, which has been up in the air for years, and the Saturday question.
And perhaps the multimodal transportation question could also be included with Transportation Commission, if you guys don't have any other ideas for questions.
Right.
Just let us take, out your questions, Tim.
We'll be talking about it.
Yes?
The Transit Self-Deal Survey, I don't know who sponsored it, or if they sponsored it, or if Transportation did it. But I was on the bus when a whole lot of people filled out the survey number.
But that was different from the survey y'all are talking about. This is the citywide, by the city. That one was a transportation, there was a bus questionnaire only.
Yeah, but I didn't know if there was some overlap.
So one is targeted users, the other is targeting the whole community. Okay, gotcha. All right, so, Mike, could you elaborate? I don't remember who brought up subdivision rewrite, I mean, you did, but what types of questions would surround that, do you think?
I don't know, I haven't given it a whole lot of thought. It was just, you know, that, an upcoming project that we'll be working on, and whether or not we could, you know, something that we want to try, that we could gather some input as to that. I hadn't given it a whole lot of thought, it was just naming an upcoming project that we're working on. We could certainly, you know, we're going through the comp plan, and the comp plan has a lot of implementation actions that we should be looking at as far as future projects, and, you know, we could certainly, to come up with some ideas as to, you know, what we're going to tackle next. We certainly don't have to decide tonight, it was more of just getting, thinking about it, and give it, give it a couple of weeks, then we'll come back at beginning of July at that meeting and talk a little, got a little bit more.
Madam Chair, may I suggest maybe it would be best for the Planning and Zoning Commission to maybe email Mike or someone about our ideas of what the questions should be, so that the next time we meet, they're down, written down, and then we can vote accordingly.
That sounds like a good idea, so that's an open opportunity there to forward questions. I just started thinking about topics and didn't really get to the point, I wanted to see where the interest pulse is in terms of where we would develop questions, but.
Almost sounds like kind of what the issue you brought up is sort of a street facades question, the infill apartments with the big blank vinyl wall.
Well, you could ask a broader question about receptivity to design guidelines in historic, I mean, you know, I've heard all kinds of comments about our new development at the corner of Jackson and Thig, and it's like, people go, why don't you do something about it? What can we do about it? We don't have design guidelines. So seeing, I mean, that would be one opportunity, is where would design guidelines make sense, and what kind of community receptivity? This is Idaho, I don't know, you know? There are other communities in Idaho that do have design guidelines for their downtowns, but that would be one potential, and it would sort of fold in what you're talking about.
Was that the diner?
Oh, I'm not good, I didn't know. Well, the other thing is, I know there was a big hoopla when a building burned down on North Main, and it was replaced by a, by ugly metal building that was, doesn't look like it belongs in an historic downtown. And that was, people wondered why we allowed that to happen, and it's, you know, it's within right. And so what, you know, is there really any receptivity to that idea of design guidelines? I think it might be one question, I don't know. It gets into the planning side of what we do, but. Anybody else have, yeah, thoughts on?
My only thoughts, I don't believe it's under our purview, but supporting any type of planning or zoning measures that promote affordable housing, however, I'm sure that the Affordable Housing Commission will hammer down those points, certainly, but that's, I know that's something at the forefront of my mind. That's a big issue, but no. I think all of the various points that you guys brought up are great.
Okay, so think about questions and send them to Mike before the July 12 meeting, because we won't be meeting at the end of July, and that way we can look at them again in August, and we might have only one meeting, we might have two in August, we don't really know yet, and then we're up against the September wall, so we don't have that many opportunities, so try to craft some questions, draft questions, and send them to Mike. We can mull over what our priorities are at the next meeting. Okay, that sounds good. Oh, okay, so now we are moving on to item seven, which is the 2009 Comprehensive Plan Update, Chapter Five, and Mike's going to present.
So we're moving on to Chapter Five. This is the Public Utilities, Services, and Growth Capacity Chapter. And at the time, we were creating the comp plan in 2009, we didn't have these two documents, so the Comprehensive Sewer System Plan and the Comprehensive Water System Plan. And these really inform our capacity in areas that are constrained throughout our water and sewer systems. And a lot of this information would just be to update the comp plan with these two documents, the information that's contained within those. I have a, I probably want to apologize, I've got what I gave you for the draft. We ended up, so there's, you know, in our department, we've got at least a couple people working on the changes, and only two of us have InDesign. So we have, the person that was working on it did have InDesign, and so we converted it to Word, because it's a lot easier to track changes, and once you go from InDesign to Word, you end up with all kinds of formatting issues, so you have, so it's tough. So I just, we had the Word version that was ready, but we'll work on putting it in InDesign, so it'll look a lot better. But that's the reason why it's, some of the graphics don't, don't look the best, and everything's, everything's there, but it's, it's a little odd. So we have growth Moscow relative of Laton County. We'd just be updating this, since it stopped in 2006 with the 2006 estimate, just updating this information with current estimates, so 2015 is the most recent census data that we're working with, so we just updated that. Figure we'd add a little bit of color to that to make it a little more readable. We go into potable water portion, and then this is just, you know, a lot of times making reference to the Comprehensive Water Sewer System Plan, so, you know, we have the statement, Moscow does not currently have a comprehensive water plant, so just replacing it with what we've currently adopted, the 2012 plan. But this goes through where we get our water and the different aquifers that we pull water and the various wells that are within the city. So we have this hydrology of the Palouse Basin, which is unchanged, and then we go through the different levels and layers. We have the Wanapum Aquifer and the Grand Ron Aquifer, and the Grand Ron's the deeper of the two that we pull water from, and these are shared, you know, regionally.
Is there anything in there about the agreement between participating communities, like they talk about at the Water Summit? The agreement between Moscow and Pullman, and anybody else who draws out of those aquifers?
Well, we have the Palouse Basin Aquifer Committee, we have their information in here, and we go off of the Water Action Plan. So it does talk about.
That's what I was trying to.
Water rights, and just goes through that, but yeah, we cite the Pullman Moscow Groundwater Management Plan, which was developed by PBAC, so we have that information in there. Updating this information about the well, so we've began development of well number 10 within, in 2015, and then well drilling was completed in 2016, and early production testing indicated a production capacity in excess of 3,200 gallons per minute, and that ends up being the highest production well in the city's system.
Mike?
Yeah?
If I may?
Yes.
On page 5.4, back, I think, back up one page, please, on your, on the screen. Can you back up one, on the, the paragraph that starts, the city currently obtains water from five groundwater wells?
Yeah.
And then you talk about well number 10. I would suggest number 10 be parenthetical, because it seems confusing that you've got five wells and all of a sudden you're talking about number 10. 10 is, 10 is the drilling order. Well 1 was in 18-something or 1901 or something, and 2, 3, 4, so forth, so just for, to keep out the confusion, I would suggest that a new well in number 10 be parenthetical, which it is.
Okay.
And then over on the next page, on 5.5, talking about well 10, you talk about to
Which page?
5.5, right before 5.3.3.
It's like that, yeah, halfway down the first paragraph.
That redundancy is for well number nine. The current permit from the state for well number 10 is only as a backup and a replacement for number nine. It is not citywide redundancy, although we may apply to change that. So 10 was drilled to back up losing number nine, which we did due to a pump problem a couple of years ago, and a couple of years before that, and maybe three years before that. So 10 is not a system-wide redundant well yet, and it's not additional capacity yet.
Only if number nine, you know.
It only, yeah, it's a, it's an alternating well for number nine or a backup for number nine, which is our big well.
Okay.
And 10 turned out to be even better than nine. And just for y'all's information, 9 is in the parking lot of the Palouse Mall, immediately west of the old Macy's West entrance. And 10 is up above Walmart to the.
West of the.
Southwest of the Pullman Steakhouse.
Walter, is, I'm, I'm forgetting anything I knew, but does the university have a well?
The university has several wells. Separate system.
Separate system, yep.
We are interconnected but separate. We're interconnected but not normally open.
Yeah, yeah, could, could open a valve, I suppose.
Read tomorrow's paper.
Yeah.
There's a press release out about it. Is that?
It seems like, as we talk about the water systems and sustainability, we shouldn't be ignoring and talking about what the university pumps as well. I mean, it just seems like the combined efforts of Moscow, Pullman, and the, and the two, I'd take it Washington State probably has some of its own wells as well.
I have no idea if they're interconnected with Pullman.
Are we all sipping out of the same glass, is what you're asking?
Yeah.
Well, we are.
Yeah.
Clearly we are, and it just seems like, you know, I don't understand it terribly well, but somehow it seems to, they have a little better dipping capability in Pullman than perhaps, maybe than we do. Okay, anyway, I just, I don't know that that goes into this comp plan exactly, but thinking about Victoria's comment about climate change and sustainability, I think those two, those things really are interlocked in major ways.
Isn't that, I mean, that's part of what Pback is supposed to help address.
I don't think it's supposed to, but I've gone to quite a few of those meetings, those yearly meetings, and I find us just kind of ad nauseam talking about the same stuff, but never suggesting how we're going to solve our problem. And I mean, you just can't keep putting bigger bricks in your toilet, it just doesn't work.
Well, it seemed like, didn't Nils give a presentation maybe two years ago that showed how Moscow's rapidly approaching its bigger lion's share than it's supposed to have? I, I just, I remember seeing a chart that showed that we're kind of rapidly approaching our agreed-upon share within the cooperative arrangement with the other, compared to the other jurisdictions. I don't know, do you remember that? Am I, I don't think I'm imagining it, but-
But anyway, we now have a plan, huh?
Yeah.
I think we've had one.
Yeah, I mean, you have a lot of the water conservation strategies, you know, it goes through further on in the chapter about effluent reuse, education, public-private cooperation, you know, a lot of things that you can be doing to reduce water consumption. I mean, the Water Department has programs for change-out on low-flow toilets, they'll give you a rebate on that, as well as landscaping, so, you know, we are doing a few things. We have, Pback has the voluntary limit for millions of gallons a year, and so we continue to track that, and I mean, it's not a restrictive limit, it's a voluntary limit, but I think that the communities in this area try to abide by that. But yeah, right, so we have the Pback Water Action Plan. It was recently updated, so we've got, so we'll be striking figure 5.6 that has 22 points, and then going to a revised Water Action Plan to reflect what Pback currently has adopted. So, you know, we go through, the first one is to limit annual aquifer pumping increases to 1% of the pumping volume based on a five-year moving average of the pumping starting in 1986, which is 745 million gallons a year. Attempt to limit the accumulated total pumping to a targeted maximum of 125% of the 1981-85 average, so increase from 700 million gallons a year to 875. Continue conservation-based rate structure for single-family residential customers, which we, you know, currently have, depending upon how much water you use, you get into different rates. Promote programs to encourage conservation, sustainable water use by multifamily residential commercial uses. Continue formal conservation program, so offering free water conserving devices to customers. Consider adding a toilet replacement rebate program, so we've done that in Moscow, we have that toilet rebate program. Continue membership and committee with funding for studies and research projects as authorized by the city council. Continue program to update failing consumer water meters. Educational programs, water recycling at building permit level for major water users. Make city wastewater treatment plant effluent available to the University of Idaho in accordance with the city's agreement with the university. So the university has a water right, and they use a lot of the effluent to water the golf course and other, you know, city or other university grounds. Arboretum is all watered with effluent, comes out of the wastewater treatment plant. Continue 24-hour daily recordings of water levels and production. Continue input to the committee of the city's monitoring efforts, and then comply with all state federal regulations. Explore possible expansion of the wastewater treatment plan effluent reuse. Continue examination of alternate water supply options as approved by city council. And so I think that, you know, there was a study done a few years ago about surface water tension, you know, so up there Moscow Mountain locations where you can put a reservoir that would help with the pumping. And so looking at that 125% cap, we still have the 875 million gallons a year, so over the five-year period, 2010 to 2015, Moscow's production exceeded, only in 2015, so that's when the city pumped 878 million gallons a year.
That was a very hot, dry June.
Yeah. So a lot of it depends on the client, you know, what happens that year with our summers, but this is a chart that we had, this is what we'll be adding that shows, you know, the 1% annual increase, show that ceiling of 125% that we're voluntarily capped at, and, you know, there was a point in time in the 90s that we were, you know, exceeding that quite a bit. And then it's gone down, you know, pretty substantial as far as the pumping, and then we did have that, that, you know, hot year where we ended up going slightly above it.
Does anybody, Walter, do you remember when we implemented watering restrictions to date certain hours of the day? How far back that goes? I wonder if it's coincidental with-
Prior, it was prior to '08. It was like '05 or '06.
Because we see a big drop right about when that happened, and if people don't water at noon, you know, it doesn't go up into the atmosphere.
Well, and the rates could have been adjusted too, so-
There was a rate structure change that was three tiers. The more you use, the more you pay per gallon.
Okay.
So that, that '04 could, could be the sticker shock, possibly.
Yeah.
And once you do that, people get over it a little bit, and it'll creep back up, but it'll, it'll tend overall to hold things down. It's, it's really incumbent upon weather. A dry spring, people water more. They start watering earlier, they water more, and certain people figure that I can make enough money to pay it because I want a garden, I want a lawn, I want flowers. But it does impact people, it makes a difference. And Mike's right, the Pback is working on an alternative service water plan. It's, it's out for public review and comment now. I think they've got a two-year period, they're going to roll it out and talk about it. It talks about not only Moscow Mountain, but going to the Snake River. It talks about bringing water through Pullman into Moscow. It's got, I forget, six, eight different alternatives of how to provide water to Moscow. The North Fork of the Palouse, by Potlatch is one of them, Moscow Mountain's one of them, Snake River's one of them, and they rated and ranked those different ones in terms of public acceptability, price, feasibility from a engineering standpoint. So you'll be, more to come.
All you need is lots of money for the out-of-basin alternatives.
Well, yeah. My contention's been all along, if, if it all goes dry, they're not going to tell Moscow and Pullman to pick up and leave town. You'd be amazed how quick they can pull water in here from somewhere.
Yeah. Yeah, and if, I mean, the way I understand it from the Pback conferences, you know, we've made progress, but all we've really done is slow the dropping of the aquifer level, so not a sustainable strategy in the long run. But yeah, given the choice between higher taxes and no water, I'm pretty sure people would go with higher taxes.
One question that was running through my mind when I was reading this section, the typical average daily use is somewhere around five, six, seven million gallons per day, and our storage capacity is four or five million gallons. I, is, is that a typical kind of relationship for cities in our situation? I keep wondering what happens with a serious electrical disruption for a couple days. So far, we've never actually run out of water, but it appears that our storage capacity is less than one day's use.
Yeah, I don't know if that, you know, what that would be comparable to with other jurisdictions. You know, I mean, we, we have, I think, a press release that went out today that was talking about repairs on at least two of the wells, and asking people to reduce their, you know, water usage in that time to try to put less of a stress on the system. But yeah, I could, I could talk to Les to see if that's in line with a lot of, you know, the infrastructure in other jurisdictions, or if we're out of the normal.
We, we have not had, you know, in the close to 50 years I've lived here, we have, we've not really had a long-term electrical disruption, but it's always a possibility.
Yeah, I think it's probably actually one of the higher possibility ones in case we ever get an ice storm down here like they got in Spokane, and suddenly the power's out for a week.
Fortunately, that's the low point of our annual daily use, but-
And a lot of them have backup generators.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was wondering about that.
Do we have any backup capability?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do. What, we can operate several of the wells?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and the sewer lift stations, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, usually diesel generators type.
Mike, is there any mention to the water basin within that first chapter of our comprehensive plan? And any preemptive measures that the city is undertaking as we prepare for the inevitable? Because as I see it, if we're going to mention climate change, then we better mention this. Because I see more drastic, long-term, and severe effects being more intimate from something like our basin running out of water than the immediate needs of climate change. And I think that's, that's important too, but if we're going to put that down, you know, this is a huge regional issue that should be acknowledged.
Yeah, I mean, I think part of it's knowing what effect that's going to have on us. You know, there's some regions that I think will probably get more precipitation and some less. You know, I think what we've seen is just more of a drastic highs and lows, you know, drastic weather patterns, I think, has been the primary effect-
More intensification on-
Yeah, that we've seen. But as far as, you know, the projections about, you know, what areas are going to be drier, what areas are going to be, you know, have more precipitation, I, you know.
I think the charts I've seen, the predictions are that we're kind of in a sweet spot where it's certainly going to be much less impact than a lot of other areas in the country. But I think that's, we've already seen that a couple of times where, you know, oops, snow melted in March.
We had a wet late winter.
Yeah.
Dry at the moment.
Yeah. So let us know what the climate's going to be in 10 years.
Get my glass ball out.
Yep.
So we'd be going through and updating precipitation, so we had numbers from 2004, 2007, just updating those of the last four years that we had data on, 2012 through 2015. And it looks, you know, you have quite a few similarities between the years. You have some years where you have a lot of inches of precipitation, and some years not so many, so, you know, pretty, pretty similar to what we've seen in the 2000s. We go over to sanitary sewer, and then, you know, once again, just updating to the sanitary sewer master plan. We've got, so in the two, it was in 2011, plan identified five phases of construction, four of which have been completed, so the, so we updated that, so we completed the fourth. The fifth phase is under study, pending potential revisions to temperature standards in Paradise Creek. So we have that issue right now where the temperature's a little bit hotter than EPA would like, and so we're going through some options with that right now. And then we have, just go through capacity constraints, so there were, you know, we had a map previously that identified a number of areas. One of those areas was running all the way up Mountain View, and so we had some replacements within that area, and so we're updating these capacities. And I think we had a little bit better of an idea once we did the sewer system master plan as to the constraint areas. You know, before the modeling, I think we had kind of an idea of these areas, but didn't know for sure, and then the modeling really gave us hard numbers and percentages as to the current capacity of a lot of the sanitary sewer system. So we have, we identify, let's see, the largest area was a parallel trunk lines that lead from the treatment plant to the area near the intersection of Troy Highway and US 95, so we've got a couple of parallel mains, and that's currently the Sixth Street project. So that's why Sixth Street's closed right now is west of Jackson, is they're replacing those lines. They went through Guywick's Field, replaced those. They went through Gormley last year, Gormley Park, and so with the completion of that, that'll be substantial as far as our capacity replacing those lines. So that's slated for completion in fall of 2017, so fall of this year should be completed. And then we identify some other capacity challenges to the system. We've got that trunk line from Eighth and Jackson, the wastewater treatment plant, so that's the one that's currently under construction. We also have White Avenue between Blaine and Troy Highway, and these are our-
Mike, you might want to check your terminology there. White doesn't go between Blaine and Troy Highway.
Yeah, it ends up coming out.
Does it, Frank, it meets, is it crossing?
Only if you go out of Robinson Park Road.
No, it comes out here, so it, right by Tesoro there, ends up going over to Blaine.
Oh, back the other way, Blaine, back to the, back to the west?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
You're right. I was thinking east.
And then, so we have intersection of Polk, Public, Main, following Van Buren, Morton, Adams, and East Street, so look at the map, that's going to be this area right here. So these are the previous constraints. We had a lot that went up Blaine Street, a lot in Mountain View, this whole corridor here that we're currently working on, on the Sixth Street area. And so these are really the revisions. So we've, you know, mapped out a lot of these areas, replaced a lot of the main, and these are just the remaining areas. We don't have the current parallel trunk lines on there because that'll be completed this year. So really, we just have three areas that are operating, I think, above 75% capacity is how we have identified as the constraint areas. Yeah, sure. Yeah, sure.
True, true old point on page 592. There's mentions of, there's three bullets there. On the third bullet, talking about Public Street. It's actually Public Avenue.
Correct. Thanks. And then we also have Sweet Avenue between US 95 and Railroad Street. So the entrance to the university. We have a main there that needs to be increased. Public safety, law enforcement, just updating this with current numbers for a number of officers in relation to population. We're a little bit more in line with what the recommendation is per 1,000 people. So we have about 1.4 officers per 1,000 population. And so that's equal to comparable-sized communities in the western mountain United States. And so just be updating that information as well as stating that Moscow's historically enjoyed very low crime rate as well. So just a few updates there. Recycling section, the biggest change to this section would just be the update to single-stream recycling. So we did that in 2016. And then just giving you some numbers as a result of the program change, citing participation rate increases, we went from 35% to 85%. And the volume of material collected increased over 135%. So pretty substantial when we went to single stream. And then it was recently expanded to apartment units.
I have a question about that statistic. Was it at the curb or was it overall? I mean, because I know when, I know our practices changed when we had five different places to take recycling. We just put them in the car and take them to the recycling center rather than try to lay it all out on the curb. And once they went to single stream, we started using single stream. So is the impact at the curb or is it, is the impact overall recycling is increased by that much?
I think the numbers cited here are overall. So it's everything that's being carried to the recycling center also.
Okay.
So everything that's being dropped off there.
Okay, so the total, yeah.
So they've seen, yeah, increase in overall participation.
So it sounds outstandingly successful.
Yeah, oh yeah. Yeah, make it easier, then you see the participation go up. So and then at the end, we talk about some additional measures that you can implement would be composting food residuals and curbside yard waste collection. So, you know, a lot of the larger communities, you'll see that, will have a separate bin for the yard waste and then they'll have another bin. I know in, when my folks left Saw Lake, they, I think they had four bins, you know, four bins they had to find someplace to store. I think Portland may have more than that, depending upon what it is.
Yeah, Seattle too.
So, yeah, it's, so, you know, those are a couple of other measures that LSI could certainly look at implementing. We start going through kind of land demand scenarios in this, just assuming, you know, trying to project future growth and what that's going to look like on the ground as far as density and household size and how much land area that's going to encompass. We go through and previously, I think, you know, when the consultant had done these numbers, they were just assuming that we're going to grow and we're going to have an average density of 3.5 units per gross acre.
That's pretty low density.
It is. And so, you know, when we look at the historical numbers, we have 70% of households will be provided in multifamily housing and 30% of households will be provided in single-family dwellings. So this is just what we've seen for the last 20 years in all of our tracking of building permits. I mean, this year, we're going to have 240-something multifamily units that are being constructed and we've only had 25, 30, single-family for construction. So, you know, being a college town, I think we're, you know, there's nothing to say that we're not going to continue to see a large, you know, portion of the new housing starts to be multifamily. So I think that that was probably an error in their calculations not to assume that you're going to have that substantial number of multifamilies. So we've gone in there and corrected that, looking at the average densities of 12 units for multifamily, which is still on the low side. You know, a lot of the apartment complexes, you see into the 20 units per acre. And so still being conservative with those numbers and then 3.5 for gross, single-family. And then, of course, this, you know, assumes that no redevelopment, the results in density increases, no growth in on-campus student housing. So it's really conservative. We're just, you know, assuming that those are stagnant, but looking at the amount of land area, you know, assuming what we currently have seen the last 20 years and projecting that out. So I think that we have a table here. You know, earlier on, we had gone through, we had all these different ways of looking at the projections for population. We ended up just going with what our linear is. I mean, we've had a pretty consistent, you know, 1.3% growth rate every year for the last, you know, almost 100 years. And so why we would look at other methods of measuring that when it's been pretty consistent, we had just, you know, struck the geometric and the exponential and just went back with the, you know, our 2030 population of 28,760 people. This is what we had projected that out as. And so you see a pretty substantial decrease in the numbers, right? So there's assuming single-family acreage here. And so once you factor in multifamily, I mean, it almost cuts it in a third of what the total acreage that we would need to accommodate what the typical development that we see. So we'd just be amending the numbers to reflect kind of the 70 and 30 multifamily to single-family as far as the land demand. Growth scenarios, the changes here are those areas where we've had development. And so urban mixed, we have identity PUD that's currently under construction. And that took about six, 6.7 acres, I think, off of the urban mixed totals. And so we've just gone through and adjusted these to reflect the developments that have happened since 2009.
So do you have enough data to see if there's any trend towards getting denser in the city? I mean, you know more than I do, and I mean, any, any rise in the level of density?
Well, we have, you know, we can certainly track that because we have, you know, GIS layer that has number of dwelling units per lot. And so, you know, we can certainly map all that out. Whether or not the density's increasing or decreasing just depends on what's happening with new construction.
Yeah.
But we haven't, we haven't really been tracking that a whole lot as far as density.
So you think it might be a small enough variation that it's like one extra dense thing?
I bet it's pretty, yeah, I think...
Pretty static?
I'd say it's pretty stat, I mean, we, we've traditionally seen, you know, over the years, pretty high multifamily and fairly consistent, single-family growth. You know, there really hasn't been these giant ups and downs. I know that there's a point in the early 2000s where I think the city actually got the, you know, developers together because there was a big multifamily shortage. And so obviously during those times, you saw a jump, you know, up. And, you know, I bet it's fluctuated just depending upon the economy. I mean, we've, we had a big, you know, you can see the construction starts in those, you know, after 2008, I think 2010 was probably our, our big year where we got hit where there wasn't a whole lot of construction going on.
Yeah.
And so, but overall, if you look at the linear, you know, projection, I bet it's pretty consistent over, over time. But we have, you know, we are, for a smaller town, one of the more dense, you know, towns that you would see.
Yeah.
Certainly. So just running through the implementation actions. So the first one was prepare a comprehensive water plan. We've done that. Prioritize the development of well 10. So we've done that. And then we've got continue to participate in PBAC and the management of the region, regional resource. And then we'd be striking and reviewing, updating the management plan to ensure that it's based on the best available data and science.
Mike, if I may?
Yes.
In your new one-point paragraph under 592, where you say identify and develop alternative water supplies such as surface water impoundments.
Uh huh.
PBAC includes two direct surface water attainments. One, as I say, is the North Fork of the Palouse and the other's the Snake River. So it's not just impounding on the mountain.
So expand that to say...
I would say surface water supply comma impoundments or aquifer storage.
Okay.
And you check with less. I would just add the word supply after surface water, even a comma to separate that from impoundments.
Got it.
Do you think we have the legal right to dip into the Snake River? How would that...
At the moment, no. If we run out of water, probably yes.
Because isn't adjudication, adjudication coming to North Idaho spinning down on the south?
Yeah.
It has been started.
Yeah, and so that makes me think about a lot of little things like, I mean, besides these big issues, but if you want to recapture your gray water in, at the residential level, for example, or you want to capture water off your roof for sister use or any of those things for irrigation, are we better off if those abilities are identified in our, both in our city code and in our comprehensive plan when adjudication comes and says we can't do that anymore?
Well, I think right now, they're declared waters of the state, but there's nobody going around enforcing that, you know. So I think that they would, you know, right now, there'd be the state. They'd be waters of the state and not necessarily private property waters. And we've got the section at the beginning that talks about private, private property rights and water rights. So the Constitution and statutes of the State of Idaho declare that all the waters of the state, when flowing in their natural channels, are public waters. The right to the beneficial use of water is a property right that can be held by a private party like any other property right. So-called water right is the right to divert public waters, put them in beneficial use in accordance with one's priority date, the date of the authorized diversion. This doctrine called priority appropriation or first in time, first in right, is the basis of administering water rights in Idaho. Generally, water rights to cities are granted and allocated by the state. And the last time the state granted a water right to Moscow was 1980.
We have the advantage that we're located on the state line. So there is absolutely nobody downstream from us who can make a claim that we're taking too much water.
Except Washington.
No, states, 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 states fight over water. They don't recognize water rights. Except under Interstate Compact.
Early state, we don't have it.
Only outlaws.
We'll have Rain Barrel.
Yeah. Looking at sanitary sewer, really the big change is just we've done the comprehensive sanitary sewer plan, so we'd just be striking that from the implementation action section. And then I think the only map that we were proposing to revise was just the sewer constraint map, just to reflect those areas that were identified in the sanitary sewer master plan. So I'll be changing those to look a lot better than just the areas where it's highlighted. So we'll have that same image just transposed over those areas. And that's it, that's all I got for chapter five.
Have one question on the, next to the last sheet here, the map of growth areas.
Yeah, that's my question too.
The one, one of the yellow areas is the PCEI campus. And a significant portion of the PCEI campus is under conservation easement. So I would suggest that it's probably not available for growth, residential growth, whatever. And I guess I'm also wondering, I'm not aware of any other conservation easements within the, the yellow on here, but I was wondering whether there might be.
Just that one we dealt with out by the mall.
The one out by the mall, I suspect, is probably to, is probably the, the white block right, right next to the state line.
It is, yeah.
But I think this would be more realistic if at least the PCEI were removed from the yellow.
Okay, yeah, we also have...
The Fosberg property is, seems to be white on this map.
Yeah. Well, we also have Peekaboo Estates, which was, which is currently under development.
Yeah.
So we can move that between Orchard and Lanny.
Yeah, I was, I was wondering about that.
Yeah, we can, we can strike that.
But how long ago was that land, the PCEI made? Well, it was originally, well, the, the most recent addition of the PCEI campus was the northern portion, which was, only became PCEI property under conservation easement a couple of years ago. Because, I mean, Rodeo is obviously one of those streets that is going to support whatever, if this is the big growth area, looking right down.
Yeah.
So the thought of blocking Rodeo is, might not be the most elegant planning. Well, I'm just mentioning... Yeah, I, I'm quite aware of the potential issues there. I think topography kind of kills that one. Well, it's an awful lot of dirt. We built two mountains before.
Tunnels, the town needs more tunnels.
And I don't think that's, that's not entirely a mountain, but I don't know, I don't know how steep, I don't know.
It's pretty steep.
But at any rate, it, you know, it, it does currently face some restrictions, and I guess my understanding of conservation easements are that eminent domain can trump conservation easement.
Okay, yeah, I can, there's a couple of other changes we need to make. We have a, like, Regia State Second was annexed. We need to make that on all the maps. We need to make that change on all the maps. So we'll do that and then take care of Peekaboo, get that one off there as well. So I'll take a look at this.
So everything for, okay, item eight, the use table ordinance definitions and obituaries charging table.
I really don't have a whole lot for this. I have, I gave you a copy of the most recent definitions section.
I don't think we got anything in our packet. I didn't get anything in the packet about it. Did anybody else?
It was in the online packet.
Yeah, I, well, when they come in the mail, I tend to not look online. Yeah, so I don't...
We got it.
Or do I, or am I not seeing something?
We got it.
Oh, the ordinance, I was looking for a table, that's what.
Yeah, it should just be the ordinance.
Yeah, okay, okay, we got that. Sorry, apologies.
So it's, so we talked about, you know, the accessory structure, building, gra, you know, we had the, all the, we talked about that last time. I incorporated all those changes in here. Really, the only other changes that I made was towards the end. We have, usually pertains to setbacks and where the lot lines are, how you determine a front lot line, how you determine a rear, a side or a street side. And we've always had this terminology where we've called yard, you know, these things... And we've always had this terminology where we've called yard, you know, these things yard areas.
Right.
And so, and it's been confusing, because we relate the setbacks to the yard areas, and, you know, why make it confusing? Why just call it what it is? It's a lot line. So, you know, so this would be page 17, we'd just be changing, instead of the front yard, rear yard, side yard, we'd just be determining what constitutes a, a front lot line, what's a rear lot line, what's a side lot line, and kind of further defining those. We also go through and, and these, you know, a lot of things are hidden within these definitions, so what it says currently, like, for the front yard, is an open, unoccupied space extending from 30 inches above the general ground level at the principal street line and nearest point of the wall of the main building on a lot, including the full width of the lot to its sideline. So, that's describing, you know, the front yard area, kind of your front setback, but it's, you know, excluding everything under 30 inches in height. So, but it doesn't, you know, in a roundabout way, it, it kinda says that, but you really need to read into it. So that's, you know, if you have a patio that's concrete, or if you have a deck coming off your house in the front, or a front porch that's not above 30 inches, you know, above grade, it does need to be setback requirements. So, what we're gonna do is, is just put that in another portion of the code to make that clear, you know? Why it would be hidden underneath this definition is not, not the best, you know, practice. We know what it, nobody else knows where it's located, so. And then as far as the setbacks, you know, we, the way we measure, you know, we did this amendment a few years ago to accommodate a lot of the older neighborhoods that have 80-foot right-of-ways, you know, where we'd formally measure from the front property line, well, a lot of times, the front property lines may be 20 feet back from the street already. And, so in order to be more consistent, regardless of where you are in the city, whether or not your property line's right at the back edge of the sidewalk, or in the sidewalk, or if your property line's 15 feet into your front yard, in order to be consistent, we started measuring the front setback from the back edge of the sidewalk. And so, you know, regardless of where your property line is, you know, that's a consistent measurement, you know, wherever you are in the city. Whether or not you're in a subdivision from the 1900s, or subdivision like Peekaboo.
So the, what about the no sidewalks zones?
Well, we have a provision for that, yeah. In such cases where sidewalks do not exist in the front of the building lot, zoning administrator should determine the point of measurement of the front yard based upon the location of adjacent principal structures, the likelihood of future sidewalk installation, and the anticipated location of future sidewalks. So, we would just anticipate where the sidewalk's gonna be, and then establish that point. So, we're just gonna be shifting that language to our definition of a setback. So on page 15 of that, we'd just be adding that to that requirement, but we'd be adding street-side yard as well for that measurement. So putting that in, in kind of the, the place where it, it should rightly be, and then just further clarifying the yard requirements. And then we'll shift the 30 inches to maybe our setbacks table, we'll have that as a sub-bullet on that table to clarify kind of this section. But, other than that, that's really the crux of the changes that I've made up to this point, I went through, and, and a lot of the NIACS definitions, they started out with, this industry is establishments that, and then goes through the definition. I just cut out that initial, this industry, and just started all the NIACS with establishments that provide, dah 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 dah. So, simplify those a little bit more, but I think we're at a point where the definitions are pretty much wrapped up, and I hope to have the, the parking table wrapped up at the next meeting, we're still working on that. But I hope to have that done. And then after that, I think we, granted, we can get the ordinance in, in all the chapters, I think we should be ready to look at the entire thing in the next few meetings.
Great. Well, at the next meeting, we have, I'm just trying to figure out the, our press on the next agenda, because we have, the next item is shared readings discussion, and we were gonna talk about the economic development toolbox, but Rob was kind of one of a very interested party in that, and I'm wondering if we should wait till he can participate in that discussion, unless he would like to talk about it now. I don't know if people had a chance to read it, but it would be the University of Wisconsin's study on, it gets, maps out an economic development tool to do a market analysis of downtown, and the process for doing that, that engages a cross-section of the community in different capacities to form a year-long study, to do, it, it sets communities up to do their own self-study, rather than bringing in the, you know, the outside expert to see if they can do it, if they can do it. And I, and so it might be nice to have him as part of that discussion, because I know that's an area he's really interested in, and have a little, but, so I guess I would ask people to kind of read that if you haven't yet for the next meeting, and.
So where is that? Because I didn't, I didn't even see that.
Well.
The other one about Cheyenne, I read the, the mall update.
Yeah, and it's the other one. And if you go to it, you just have to, you have to just keep clicking in, and, once you get into it, it'll take you, you know, you can kind of get a sense. I kept finding the same article, no matter what I clicked, and I don't know if it was me, user error, or what, but, but it's still a, a pretty good map of what, I mean, in terms of conceptually, of what, you happen to do a market, self-study, a market analysis of downtown, and finding what, I thought it would be interesting. And so that got out of the way, got off the topic of malls, but we did, sort of did that last, last time, so.
There's a PDF link, it's like the first link, and then you can, it comes out to be something like this, downtown business district market analysis, and then it, it goes through like a PDF document.
And you can get it, get there by two different avenues with two different print jobs, but it's the same article as what I discovered, so. So that's, and, and, you know, it's, I think it's interesting, and, you know, to read it with a perspective of, is this something we want to do here? You know, is this, I think. And, and so I know we have Les McDonald coming, and that's usually not short, but how long is he gonna talk, do you think?
I'd say at least an hour, you know?
Okay.
I was anticipating having the agenda pretty light to give time for his presentation.
And they'll all be members of the audience, I am more than sure. So, or I'm fairly sure, so if we'll want to ask questions as well.
Yeah, I figured you'd carry it.
Yeah.
You know, I think that we have chapter six of the comp plan done as well, so I was gonna run through that, but I, you know, probably just Les, the comp plan, and then the shared readings, I think we'll probably keep it.
We don't have any subdivisions in works.
Keep it pretty light, so.
Okay. All right, is that all right? I guess we're done.
Sounds good.
Thank you.